Moved, is there a second? It's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Please stand for the saying of Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Alright, we had no one signed up for residents' comments. Move down to consensus agenda items. I'd like to call for motion to approve the consensus agenda as submitted. Any discussion, anything to separate? All those in favor then please say aye. Aye, opposed or abstaining, motion carries. Personnel items, like the call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. Been moved and seconded. I'd like to separate item number one. Anything else to separate or discuss? And then all those in favor of accepting items two through twenty-six, please say aye. Aye, opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Turn it over to Mr. Stack.
It's a privilege this evening to recommend to the Board of Education, Ms. Megan Nolan. Megan is here and joining us from Saint Mark's Catholic School in Buffalo, where she's been an English teacher, and she's looking forward to joining our district as a high school AIS teacher in English. Prior to that, she's a Geneseo graduate and also a University of Buffalo graduate, and we're really looking forward to bringing Megan aboard. So, thank you.
All those in favor of appointing Megan Nolan to one-year red funding AIS senior high, please say aye. Abstaining, motion carries. Welcome to the fucking family. Alright, Deputy Treasurer? Want to discuss that?
Yeah, so, um, we need someone who can act as backup, so that's why we have Alison when needed.
I'd like to call for motion that be it resolved that Alison Davis be appointed Deputy Treasurer for the periods when the district treasurer is unavoidably absent from her duties from eleven-four-twenty-one to six-thirty-twenty-two. Is there a motion? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Capitol Project Committee?
Nothing new except we are having a meeting on the twenty-ninth. Over the stuff we're looking at doing. Twenty-ninth, four o'clock.
Policy Committee?
Uh, we had to reschedule our last meeting because I was unable to attend, so it is rescheduled to December fifteenth.
One item for the Policy Committee, we're welcoming a new community member, Anthony Moser. It's been pointed to your committee. You have some fundraisers there as informational items. Official student members report. Ooh. Alright, very good. Alright, Superintendent's Report?
Thank you. First, by the way, all of our, I mean, our fall sports season and athletes were just outstanding. We have two swimmers competing states. We have one cross-country athlete participating in states, and we have our girls volleyball team competing states, so it's a really great season for our athletic program once again. The, I just wanna thank El Paul, who is the Chair of our Hall and Law of Fame Induction Committee. The event went off without a hitch. It was really an outstanding event. This year, this year we inducted two years worth of inductees. We did that last year. There's certainly, there's pictures, so I'll be sharing with the board. They'll also be available on our website. We just received the pictures back from the photographer today. The event was live streamed. So thank you to our tech department. Dominic Brilliant Food Service and his team were outstanding. The place was, it was as if he were running a wedding there. We had very small tables, only four a table, like we did during the day, so we of course, we were respectful of COVID. You know, we received already some thank yous, really nice cards back. I think it was a really nice day for for the inductees, for the families, so thank you. Just thank everybody involved. It was outstanding day. Tuscarawas, you've heard me talk a number of times about the Tuscarawas School right now, and the fact that we have one of the schools in New York State that is a native school on native lands. There's only three. New York State is responsible for the funding of the Capitol Project work at that school. They have not been maintaining the school. We've asked for twenty million dollars in next year budget to do all the repairs that we believe are necessary. I do want to share, there's some good news. I heard today that the brickwork that needs to be done is actually expected to go out the bid in March, so we will expect that work to start in the spring and the summer. It is the work, of the work that needs to be done. It is the most critical. It's not the only critical item, but it's certainly the most critical item, so we're happy to hear that that's happening. Just want to thank the Board again. We celebrated Board recognition today with some food, some well-deserved food for all of our Board members who do an outstanding job and care a lot about the school. So, thank you. Board of Education walkthrough? Steve and I spoke, we were looking at November twenty-ninth is the date for the walkthrough, and wondering how that works for this calendar. Good? Okay, so I'll work on a schedule, get that to you, Steve, to take a look at, and then we'll get it out to the rest of the group. I'm asking for your permission to put in an amendment for some of our federal funding. There's, there's a need in our district right now for some vans. We'd like to purchase two vans. As you know, we've had a difficult time, as have, you know, most of New York, if not all, the nation with bus drivers. Getting enough bus drivers, and what we believe is if we had a couple vans that we could shuttle kids around when necessary, obviously that's not our first choice. We could certainly, certainly benefit. There's some other areas that we think would be beneficial as well. Down the road, we know that some families have trouble getting here for parent-teacher conferences, meetings. It's a way we could maybe pick up some parents. We don't have a way to get to, you know, something like the parent conference. We just feel like there's a number of examples of ways. Sports, if we have small groups, we're going somewhere, we wouldn't have to rent vans, we can actually drive, drive. So we have a small group of swimmers, as I mentioned earlier. We have a cross-country runner, as opposed to having to try to find a way to share a van or pay for some company to come transport our kids, but we could do it. So. Currently, all we have are small, some small buses. Go, go ahead, Alison, I'm sorry.
They'll also save us from using the large buses when we have very few people to transport.
You know, another example of this, you know, might be, you know, we are especially stressed with the number of drivers. You know, we would miss a kid, what do we do? We turn around. You know, transportation could even be using, you know, using the van as opposed to taking a big bus back out to pick up one kid who we missed or who didn't, wasn't there for their bus stop. We can send a van out. I mean, the cost of sending out a big bus to pick up one kid, right? More expensive. So, we think there's plenty of really good reasons to do this. We believe that the federal funding can certainly be used for it. So, we would just be reapportioning some of the money that's in those federal funds for the days. No, what we would do is we'd make sure that they were of a size and capacity that didn't require a CDO.
You don't necessarily have to send a bus driver out.
Correct. We have to do, we have to do all, make sure we do all of our homework on that. You know, I heard ten, I heard twelve. What's that? Twelve-nine today, so we've heard a few different numbers. We'll make sure that we know the number that's, you know, acceptable and not needing a CDO.
Just say the number's nine, then you need a CDO. It doesn't Okay, so, it doesn't restrict you from buying a twelve-seater if needed, and you put a CDO person in there at that one particular time.
That might be the case. I think you might be right. We want to make sure. Yeah, exactly. The number of kids, the size, we, we, we very recently said, here's a need, right? So to give an example, we've had now four occasions, three at the end of the day, I think it's four. Only one at the beginning of the day, the other ones at the end of the day, where we've had to actually double our buses back out. And in the morning, had we had a couple vans, because one of the, one of the runs was actually a smaller run, we could have probably, at the same time that everybody else was getting picked up, ran out, got half the kids and ran out, got half the kids, with people who didn't need a CDO. So, you know. We, the question was about electric vans. We'll, we'll take a look. We haven't looked at any of them, but yeah, that's a shirt line.
It's actually, rather than all-electric, I was looking at hybrid, Steve, I have a hybrid battery van that doesn't need plugging in because we have nowhere to do that, so. We got, we were, we have to go on the state website, basically, because it's all on state bid and explain what we want and then they bid on it, so.
Would this be, the drivers be specific to the Transportation Department or to the coach, for example, at three dollars for a tournament or a basketball?
It could be used that way as well.
But even so, I mean, we could still, in that situation, if there was a bus driver available, you know, instead of taking the larger bus, which is a lot more wear and tear and fuel, switch the because that's why smaller teams obviously don't need to, everyone have to have that.
You say there's a weekend tournament.
Yeah.
Basketball coach is taking eight kids. Instead of taking a whole bus, could the coach take those students to the tournament and back?
I mean, I'm thinking if you want to venture to hire a bus driver, you may have to sit down with the dealer.
Oh, of course. Of course, and, you know, in almost all those cases, the first, the first goal. You know, with a CDO, right? It's when we, when we can't do that or when we run out. And, you know, honestly, I just don't know if this short-term problem that we're dealing with is short-term. You know, it was here before the pandemic. It's worse with the pandemic, with the number of drivers. You know, and what will be like in the next two, three years if it stays the same, you know, so we think this is a way, another way to help deal with this issue.
Any questions to Superintendent's Report?
Whoa, 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 one more. Everybody knows it, right? Food service. Breakfast, lunch, every day, they're due. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, with the, have you looked into, you know, lunches or breakfasts being provided after school for them to take home for the next day as opposed to eating in teachers' classrooms? I know with the spread, you know, the increase in cases, now we're putting kids together in smaller classroom, you know, classrooms with masks off.
Good question. We were looking at that for a different reason initially, right? We were going to look at that. If we didn't increase the number of meals that were being provided, we're now at the middle school five hundred breakfasts that people are taking. I mean, last year we were at seventeen, so I don't know that I want to change that because it's working. If we saw spread happening within our schools, you know, within our classrooms, then I would absolutely look to, let's say, let's have them take it home. Right? To this point, and, you know, so you know, Mr. Stack and I put together a message to him, probably go on the first day tomorrow. The numbers in the county numbers in the county are high. We've had a couple back-to-back days where the numbers in our county of positive COVID cases were high. That said, we are not seeing the individuals who are quarantined, so they're the closest contacts in our buildings, coming down positive. This goes all the way back to last year. It is just not the norm. If it's happened once or twice during this whole time, I mean, it is not the norm. And when I say once or twice, I know what, once or twice that I know for sure that we staff, you know, just happen to be, you know, eating meals. So, we've been, and we're So, you know, I think if we saw that, I'd be inclined to say, we gotta change gears.
Any other questions to Superintendent's Report? I ask for Board discussion. One thing to add to the agenda for the December meeting is the review of Board Member Policies in the Policy Manual. That does not go to Policy Committee that is done with on the Board itself. We had talked about it a couple of meetings ago, that has to be reviewed, like you do in the December meeting. Dan, could you please make sure all the Board members get those particular policies emailed to them in PDF form? That's correct. The Policy Committee cannot create policies that affect the Board. The Board has to enact that piece itself. And then, any other items for Board Discussion? Any old business this time?
Some, one of a discussion on these virtual meetings.
It's right next to the new business. Alright, any other besides the virtual meetings, any other old business? Discuss right now. Okay. Item for new business that we have on there is Chapter four seventeen, the Virtual and Hybrids Meeting. Oh, go ahead, if you wanted to. Sorry, I know, John, you were the one that put it on, on here, so actually, you're the one that should probably introduce and start.
We have had previous discussion about it. It's been kind of bantered. We did agree to a framework at a previous meeting. Looking back through it, since there's been discussion, there's been some concerns. And I know that at this time, that it's such expired on January fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two. I don't know, talking two months here, I don't know how much further. It's extended or it doesn't, but we have to assume that it's done in that time. I know that, just looking at the and the virtual meetings was in the Board Online Report. There were two conditions that needed to be met, and the first was public meeting must have the ability to view or listen to proceedings, which we do anyways. And the second is proceedings must be reported and later transcribed by the district clerk. And it says, under existing state law, Board members are publicly noticed out and from where they're virtually participating, so you have to give your location. And there was some concern, I know through a state level, that means the location of the individual's home has to be disclosed as part of them going and using that option, whether it's virtual or a hybrid. So, that's where we left off. I don't know, Rick, you wanted to pick it up from there?
And I agree with, basically everything you're saying, I agree with what you said in an earlier text last week. I kind of thought it was all settled, but then Steve red flags something with NISBA on one of the examples that I used. If I was here to speak to Steve, okay, and so I thought it was all settled other than that. First of all, because I'm using the example, I'm looking at the town is virtual, so, at least in the January. The town would never allow me to stay in a meeting, just like you wouldn't allow me to stay in a meeting and be virtual. I mean, for NISBA to come up with something like that. I'd say keep it simple, stupid. I don't know anything else to say but that. So, now we're talking and I'm virtual with the town, so there's no problem with you dressed, come in these meetings. There never has. You've seen me bounce in from a meeting, executive session, go back out to the town, come back out here in this state. I'm not trying to dodge things, I just have another commitment. And every time there's a board meeting and there's a question whether I can come, I always reach out to Dan exactly what's on the agenda, and I try to weigh the agendas. And I've made both, or I'm making a decision to cancel one meeting. So, with that being said, I don't think there's going to be initial because if I have to sit in my car, if there was, and say, I'm in my car, or I'm at Millard Road, it's not a big deal. The state's allowing to do it. The state has changed the open meeting law. There's really some concern out there. The county is anywhere from eight to eleven percent rate. It's higher. I don't know if it's higher than it was when we were virtual, and I don't remember the numbers, okay? So, but then something comes through today about a doctor step. So, I need to know that because I'm the one probably, probably a greater risk, okay? So I need to know where we're at. So I know what I'm doing. Now, we do have another issue with someone else, okay? And I kind of don't follow in these lines, so I think we need to discuss the two issues. I don't follow these lines because it's not necessarily set, but masks causes problems. And I personally I'm not a doctor to determine what problems is caused by them. I mean, there's HIPAA laws, federal laws. I mean, I don't mind telling you everything about me, but everyone's different, okay? So, if a mask is truly causing someone a problem and he's willing to do virtual, we agree that if you're on vacation in Florida, you can do virtual. And we're going to restrict it to someone who wants to do virtual, because and you guys know the reasons. He's not using the U.S., right? Why? He's uncomfortable or, you want to deprive a board member of that? I mean, what are we trying to do?
Somebody take on this, Rick, is this. You said the board's virtual, but not the whole town is virtual. So, right there. You're saying you're, the board meets virtual. Everybody in the county is virtual. No, no, no need in.
Planning and zoning board is virtual from today moving forward.
Wasn't the last Okay, so anyways, you said that before too. My take on it is, in everything that was before, we never had a problem with. Let's leave it just the way it was. You did what you just said, you went back and forth at your meetings. Okay, we've done that in the past, let's leave it the way it is. I don't think we should do anything other than what we've been doing in the past.
Sure, you could say that, because you don't have certain health issues that some people have.
How do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, then.
I don't know. I know, I do. So, what triggered, the only discussion I wanted to have was about the JFYG two weeks of meetings, virtual meetings, but when I'm in virtual, it's really not an issue. What brought this up now concerning to me is the doctor step that was just brought up, right?
It wasn't just brought up. It was brought up over three months ago. Three months ago, am I correct or not? It was brought up three months ago, right?
Well, I didn't see it. I don't remember seeing it.
Again, Rick, you brought the point where everything was, you know, each individual member had a different situation. That was brought up for a different individual member because of that situation. That's why it was not, it was not directed towards you. It was not, not in your situation, because we obviously know your situation with them. It is brought up in the other situation, so.
Okay, so how, and I understand, so, how am I, what am I, I need to understand my situation.
When, because you have medical documentation that you've are at risk in that situation for contracting COVID and are to yeah, you're immunocompromised, so obviously that falls into the fact that you can go hybrid.
I can't reach the doctor, so I can't find out, I can't get a number for Zoom.
No, you, you are, no, in your situation, you are, I mean, what we were saying is you, you have already, we have documentation for that piece. We already know your history, Rick. The fact of the matter is, is that you have someone who has been skirting around, who was told three months ago, and then told by a member of NISBA when we, number of NISBA was here, that you need to provide a, if you are going to, see what it is. If you're going to miss a meeting because you are not able to wear a mask, you have to provide medical documentation for that piece to the Superintendent, just like any other employee does. And that was three months ago, was said, and you know, so we then had someone eat during a sub for a very extended, long period of time while drinking water, making a mockery of this board one way, and then you know, can barely be heard last meeting on Zoom from what I hear, because I wasn't obviously here for that particular one. You know, the Board members that have contacted me are fed up with that piece of it, and that is why John last month put this on here to discuss this piece, to reconvene and talk about more, to clarify more what you can go hybrid on, go virtual with. And the Board feels, many Board members here feel, that so a member has taken advantage of the situation, had plenty of time to get documentation for it after being told to, and has now made it into, you know, basically mocking the rest of the Board and, you know, referring to us as sheep at one point. So, they've had it. And they've all reached out to me to express that piece, and that's where this came to a head now. And, you know, so be it as it is there, and that's why John wanted to put it on there, so we can discuss and clarify that piece for us. Yes, and it was not you personally. No, it is not you. It's not an issue with what you brought up, and we have decided that, and obviously, and we know that situation, that is not the issue. The issue is obviously something else that is a particular other member that people, we thought that a board retreat would work through and have understanding with and everything, and it seemed to not, and, you know, that's where people are frustrated and angry. You know, and I've had many phone calls to discuss that anger from them, especially after, you know, when it's announced that someone wants to go virtual, when we made a commitment to be here, when, you know, we are following state guidelines and state rules to how we have to enact ourselves here, and I'm pretty sure there are others in the district who are in a similar boat and are wearing masks for the entire day. And, you know, the concern that was expressed by Board members is that our meeting is like a half hour long right now. It's a very small window of time in the whole grand scheme of things to to one, not have, ask, provided what was asked for for the past three months. But number two, you know, they, members feel that they've been mocked out because of different antics by said Board member. So. You and I have talked numerous times about how, you know, certain things don't take them personally, because a lot of times they're not directly towards you, so, yeah. Yep. No, I'm gonna make a general statement out there, and that, because that's, you know, what we can do, what we do in those situations without trying to call call out one Board member, but. No, I'm gonna make a general statement out there, and that, because that's, you know, what we can do, what we do in those situations without trying to call, call out one board member, but, you know, so anyways, I'm gonna go back to John, because this is your discussion, because your, your item was put on there, so where do we want to go from there?
No, that's fine. What what I would like to do at this point is, and this is what I'm proposing, we can have further discussion, is to give the superintendent the ability to call for a virtual board meeting, given a complement weather, or if there's a health emergency, requires us not to be in person. Other than that, I think our expectation, unless this is extended, is to be here in person, wearing masks, if you need a mask break. I'm sure the same rules apply as a, as a student or a staff, take ten minutes, go outside. Nobody's going to say anything, but I think that's, I'd at least like to give superintendent the opportunity, if need be, implement whether health emergency, to use his judgment to say, hey, we don't, we shouldn't be here tonight. Other than that, I think the expectation is for us to uphold our offices and who we're elected to become here and do our business. And furthermore, I'm just going to go a little personal. We're spending a lot of time on noneducational matters that don't benefit the district. And I'd like to see us get back to some of those, moving things forward. We talked about the rules for the board member, uh, the board manual. Those are things we should be focusing on, getting into schools, seeing what's going on here, and stuff, talking about when we should be at a meeting and whether we should have an excuse or not an excuse or not. My take.
And I agree with that a lot.
Go ahead. Thank you, Rick.
Can I just say too, like, let's talk about the fact that extra work it creates for a district clerk, having to transcribe a meeting, even when we're doing it. So that's why I-
More work than people realize.
Correct.
Well, the reason to go virtual is not to be concerned about the extra work. The reason to go virtual is why we did it six months ago, to help the state.
Right, but it should be, it should be used fairly.
I agree. I'm not going to make a decision worrying about someone have to type an extra out. I make a decision based on the board's safety.
I agree, but it should be used fairly. Like, that's not, I mean, the expectation is that extra work for somebody that doesn't need to have that.
I think what she was referred to as anything other than that, right?
Yeah, like-
Why would we burden, burden somebody?
Correct.
Let her say what she was referred to.
Uh, I, I, I want to clarify one, you gotta watch more, we're interchanging hybrid and virtual. Virtual means we're all not here. All right, so, you know, make sure you're focused, because if you're, you know, virtual, there's a whole different set of guidelines than hybrid anyways, because of us not meeting in person. This is like a discuss hole, discussion we had last year. Did all this, we had to score. Okay. Um, yeah, I think that after the last time we discussed this, one of the other problems that came up is that it turned into, you know, hey, well, if I'm on vacation, why don't I just join, you know, hybrid and stuff like that? You know what? If 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 we're going to those extent, you know, you're going on vacation, you're doing that, spend that time with your family, do that stuff that you're going to do, and you're, and enjoy that time as opposed to doing this. I know, you know, that you- Right. You know, it's not like we're going to, uh, you know, a rubra for four months. It's great.
You can still watch streaming.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and then as a, a really, a piece I found interesting, you have someone virtual, you have to form where you are, open that up to someone. So technically, you open your home to someone to come in and suit with you at that meeting, which is a piece that I have known, because I'm not mistaken on that.
Well, remember, while four seventeen is enacted as, it's not, it's, yes, moving forward past that point. Right.
I don't have any questions. You have to identify where you are, if you don't have a home, I don't know.
While, while four seventeen is on, they they said they'd like you to, and this was the question in access section, that was at the end, that was one of the things, that the girl said, they'd like you to, as being a member of, as they're a member of the open meeting, you know, organization, say, hey, I'm here. Because there's a, the question that comes up in the legality of that is, that's a, you know, let's say Bob's at home. We don't know who's in Bob's house, you know? Has Bob got friends over? Does Bob have, if we're, and and I I use the example, and a couple of board members talking about this, was the executive session example. You know, we're hearing a student, um, appeal and a suspension, we're virtual, uh, someone's hybrid. We don't know if, in there, that someone who knows that kid's there and hears that whole thing. You know, so I, that is, that is a worrisome piece for me, where, you know, if we were all virtual, well, there's a reason why we're all virtual. There's nothing we can do about that piece. If we're hybrid, I, there's a, you know, regular board meeting, okay, you know, if someone walks by, they hear what's going on, they can walk by and hear, hear what's going on. Executive session was my worry, because there's a lot of stuff that gets talked about in executive session, and and the one that really stood out was a couple of weeks ago, when we did the student hearing of like, wow, there is a lot in here, if we're going through the whole background of this student, that no one else should hear unless they're in this room. So that was, that was a major concern of mine, and that was that, you know, just before that, that's when I sent out that original message, I was like, sort of rethinking the whole hybrid thing. That was the part that triggered that, was hearing that from the the question answer from NISBA, was like, whoa. You know, we just opened ourselves up, because now if someone says something, well, we can't say that, yeah, well, we were all in executive session, but there's only one or two members that were hybrid that, and did they, did someone there hear it? Now we have a a problem with people hearing that of stuff that was not supposed to be meant from outside executive session.
I know it's a concern when you're evil, when you're on both sides, you don't always-
Right. Yeah. So I, and and you know what? I mean, it's, I did not also want us to get a little cavalier in the sense of us saying, oh, you know what, it's, we're going to be, it's going to be convenient, and, um, you brought up the point, hey, I'm out on my, I'm fixing my car. You know, I don't feel like stopping right now, because I grease all of my hands, I'll just put the meeting on over there and and join. I just, I don't want the board to get to that point. I want us to understand, we we committed, when we ran, to being here and being in person, because the public, when they want to speak to us, they're going to come here. And if we're hybrid, that, there might be an issue where someone comes and has a question for that particular member. And from what I heard from last meeting, it wasn't going to work while convening that and having a discussion with that member, uh, you know, with with the public, you know, so, yeah. So anyways, to your point, um, we can make that as a directive to the superintendent. Um, so we would direct your super, the superintendent to do, to do that, if if the need be. You know, when it comes to immunocompromised and have health and and the worry of contracting COVID in that sense, I will leave it up to board members in that situation, because we do know that your situation of that, of that too, if it need be, and Dan, you know the situation in there, that we can, you know, we can go hybrid in that particular sense. But when it comes to simply, you know, non-documented medical issues for not being here, or that you've made a mockery of this board with, I I, that doesn't fly with me anymore. And from what I've heard with numerous, from people of, of members in the, of this board, it doesn't fly with you either.
First question, does it take long to create the virtual consent?
Any other discussion of that item then? All right. Um, other new business. The piece that I'm going to focus on, though, for our next meeting, please make sure that you do not wait to the day of or the night before to read through the policy section that goes to the board. If you could assemble questions ahead of time, so you're ready with them, or items or ideas that you have. I know there's already just some things that, when I looked at them, I'm like, oh, we need to revise that, because it's, our boards don't meet that. It, our, not because of us, but just because of the dynamics of the way the school board is, it's totally changed from what that policy pieces, which is a lot of reasons why the policies get revised anyways, is we go through that. So. You know, you have, you know, you can only run for school board president if you're on the board for twelve years. No one got that job. All right, anything else? All right, public comments? Board member comments?
I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and everyone stay safe. The virus is getting a little wild out there, so stay safer, please.
I'd just like to congratulate the inductees into the full fame there. It's really nice that we're doing this. A lot of congratulations to them.
Um, I just want to wish, uh, wish luck to the volleyball team this weekend, so big time heading out there to the States and uh, it's one of those times as a coach for an outdoor sport, you sort of envy the indoor sports when it gets this late in the season, because they get to do it inside and not have to stand in there. But, um, all right, any other?
I just want to thank Dan for the full parts.
Yeah, thanks, Rachel.
Thanks.
All right, the call for motion to adjourn. Moving in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those are standing, motion carries.